Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the Livingston zoning board of adjustment. Today is July 22, 2025. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exists and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning book plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member board of adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you are an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you are objected to any type of variance that's been granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the planning administrator, Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and West Essex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Mr. Kenia?
Mr. Kenia, yes. Mr. Horn, it's out. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yep.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Ms. Sohel?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Yeah, Coram?
Thank you. The first application today is 64 Hillside Avenue, block 3901, lot 76. That has been adjourned, as of now, to August 26, 2025. If you're here for that matter, we're not hearing it. So it's not going to be re-noticed, and you're free to go or hang out and listen to the rest of the applications. So that was for 64 Hillside Avenue. Mr. Kenia, if you would like to call the next application?
Blocks 7300, lot 81, 236 north, sorry, East Northfield Road. Application number 2025-31-V, Erdem and Navra Halulu. Applicant seeks approval to construct a two-family addition, two-story addition with the new deck and the wraparound porch in violation of the following section. 170-98C2, front yard setback 40 feet required. 27.5 feet proposed, 22.5 feet variance requested.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Passan from the law firm Sils Commiss and Gross. And I'm representing the applicant in connection with this application for a front yard setback relief. The applicant, as stated before, is proposing to add a two-story second addition so that this single-family home is now a two-story home, I should say, with a wraparound porch as well. The variance relief that we're seeking here is actually a little bit interesting because all it really is is just an exasperation of the existing front yard setback because we are adding that second story. This is actually also a nice story, pun intended, because the individual, she's been living here for multiple years with her family. She has three kids, and she's looking to stay in Livingston, but they need more space. So that's the reason for the application. Although the site is just under a half an acre, instead of doing a demolition rebuild, she's just looking for a modest improvement to add the additional bedroom floors. It would also be very difficult to do a new rebuild because the site itself is played with riparian zone. However, that is not intruding on or encroaching on it. There are no DEP issues, at least to date. With that being said, I will have two witnesses tonight. My first witness will be my architect, and my second one will be my planner. So if I may call my first witness, I'd like to bring on my architect, Peter, please.
Okay.
Yes. Shoot, whatever you want to use.
Did video?
What was that, Jackie? Okay.
All right. Sir, do you swear a firm, tell the truth to the zoning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Peter Serpico, S-E-R-P-I-C-O.
Okay. And if we can have Mr. Serpico's qualifications on briefly?
Yes, can you please provide your educational credentials and whether or not your license is still in good standing?
Yes, licensed in New Jersey for the last 26 years. Education, New Jersey Institute of Technology, graduated in 1986, Bachelor of Architecture.
Does this board accept him as an expert in architecture?
Does anyone in the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Great. Peter, did you have an opportunity to visit the subject site?
Yes, I have.
And are you also the architect that's responsible for drafting the proposed plans?
Yes.
Great. Why don't you walk us through what we're proposing here tonight?
Sure. So we did some preliminary work.
Much pull there.
Oh, yeah, right here. Perfect, thank you.
We're high-tech here in Livingston.
High-tech.
I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, you can keep scrolling down to your architectural plans. That's just the existing survey.
Okay. So as Matt mentioned, this is pretty much a modest project. Ms. Camudi really came to us in Jazz Development Construction to really give her a house with some open space, enough for her growing family, and also a four-bedroom, two-bath-on-the-second-floor home. And just to start, just to see where this whole thing falls in terms of the lay of the land, is that the front of the home is 27.5 feet from the property line, and it's an existing non-conforming situation. Really need to push the house back. Matt, what is the coverage? Is it 40 feet, the front yard?
40 feet.
40 feet. So we really designed this with the intent of keeping the basement, working off of the original structure and adding a 16-foot-deep addition out the rear by 36'9". Reason being that we really want to keep this house where it is is that the rear of the site, right past this wood fence, has a pretty steep slope. And we wanted to keep at least a good 25, 30 feet of flat land in back of the house that has some connection to the garage for her backyard activities. It does have a nice part of property on the western side, but, I mean, in terms of a general oversight, we would like to keep this area as free as we can. So we were, again, minimal in terms of our addition, as minimal as possible, to make the plan work in our programming, which meant we really wanted to keep the footprint where it was and go up with two stories from that line. We weren't encroaching any further. That's where we arrived at the plan. Okay. I guess it's still regenerating? Well, I have my plan, that's okay. Anyway. There you go. Oh.
It's loading.
It's just loading. Okay. There we go. Going to the floor plan, going to take a bit to... Oh, here we go. Taking a little bit to load, but...
Peter, while we're waiting for this to load, why don't you walk us through the elevations?
Sure.
And the materials that are being used.
I don't think this was scanned in properly because it's not available online.
Okay.
So the floor plan has not been... And just a quick correction, it's an R3 zone, so it's a 50-foot setback and not a 40-foot setback.
Okay, so...
The first floor existing is 790 square feet of footprint, the basement footprint and first floor. And the second floor is a minimal second floor, is a small stairway that goes up to a few bedrooms that are super tight on the existing footprint. So what we plan to do is keep this front line of the hall at the 27'5 setback and raise it to two stories. We kept it under the maximum height also, it's 32 feet. 32'7 is the average grade that we worked, from average grade that we worked out, 32'7 from the ridge height. And then, instead of make this, to eliminate some of the massing on the street side, I opted to keep her kitchen with cathedral ceiling. She'll have some skylights in there, kept it to a one-story, just to break it up. And at least part of the front facade of the house is only a one-story. That was kind of purposely done to keep the front face a little, have a little more variation to it. On the sides, yes, there's a wraparound porch. Come out the front, wraps around to a living room that comes out. Your back office on the first floor, all nine-foot ceilings on the first floor. Bedrooms eight feet, four nice bedrooms on the second floor. Master bath, master bedroom. And this would be a rear view. The deck wraps around from the side, primarily for Ms. Camudi to use on her daily activity. She wants to really be home most of the time, work out of a home office. Though she has some access to a nice deck and a little, sort of a balcony that connects each side of the yard towards, to the garage side of the property. This would be the garage side. It'd be the east side, which is the, this is the cathedral ceiling of the family room, of the kitchen, rather. Again, nine-foot ceiling to the plate, the higher raised ceiling. And again, that's just the bedrooms on the upper floor. Let's see. So I guess it didn't come on yet.
That's not going to load.
I guess I can use this? Yeah.
I think we, I think we got the gist of the interior. There's no, there's no, Mr. Passata, I think what we're showing here is that at the end of the day, there is no variance created, that it's the existing variance that is being double, I don't want to say doubled, that's my word. It's being now, by the second floor, it's now because of that.
Yes, absolutely. Essentially, the case all says that whenever you have an existing nonconformity and you're adding additional improvement to it, it exasperates that issue. So because of that, you have to put back on the proofs on the record in order to justify especially the negative criteria. So that's what brought us back to the board. But as far as it goes with all the other bulk standards, none of those other bulk standards are being triggered, especially when we look at a zoning board application for single-family homes. We tend to concentrate on ratio or floor area. And for this proposed project, to keep with the theme of being modest, it's almost 1,000 square feet below what would be permitted. So, yes, that is correct. The only variance is the existing nonconformity.
And Mr. Serpico worked very hard to keep this addition within those parameters, right?
Absolutely. Did a wonderful job.
Yeah, we, you know, we worked off the footprint, the first floor, and again, as modestly as possible, we were first at 18, 19 feet. We brought it back into 16, giving the yard a nicer flatness to that fence line which starts the slope in the back. And the great room, dining room, Ms. Camudi's office. Nine-foot ceiling, but it's only a 15-foot interior space, but she was happy with it. Again, a real modest way of looking at it, getting what she needs. Open living room space, nice kitchen, and a bath on this level. We're also extending the basement, a new footprint under the, under the footprint of the home. Second floor, it's pretty much a colonial setup. You go up, straight up the steps. Four bedrooms, one is being a master ensuite with a master bath. Another bath, really three baths up here. And this is a Jack and Jill that's accessible from two of the bedrooms. Again, that's really about it in terms of...
That's great. I have no further questions for this witness. Does anybody in the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? One down, one to go.
All right. I'd like to call my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Graviano is testifying his capacity as a planner?
Yes.
Because we can't have another architect.
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right. So we're just going to have, Mr. Graviano's appeared before this board many times in his capacity as a planner. If, Mr. Graviano, if you can just certify that as of today, that your certification as a planner remains active?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Chair?
Does anyone in the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in planning.
Thank you, Board. Always a pleasure being here. Hope everybody's having a great summer. The applicant, it's a very simple application. You've just heard the architectural testimony, where great care went into respecting the needs of this existing dwelling as well as the site. This is a specific piece of property known as block 7300, lot 61, with a street address of 236 East Northfield Road. This is a 19,854-square-feet parcel. The applicant is proposing a two-story addition and wraparound porch on the dwelling. You heard some of the background of the property. This property does have a portion of the corner, in the southeast corner of the Cub Brook. So there is a wetlands buffer from that stream corridor. The topography on the site has the main portion of the property a good distance above the stream. The applicant seeks to reutilize a portion of the existing foundation, whereas the existing dwelling is in violation of the required front yard setback of 50 feet. 27.5 feet exist today. The applicant proposes 22.5 feet to accommodate that very aesthetically pleasing wraparound porch. The applicant's variance request certainly could be granted under the C1 criteria due to the exceptional situation affecting this specific piece of property. That's the Cub Brook in the southeast corner of the property, as well as the existing deficient front yard setback. That's another exceptional situation affecting this specific piece of property. The variance can be granted without substantial impairment to the zoning planner's zoning ordinance with no substantial detriment to the public good. This is a property that's almost 20,000 square feet, and there is a considerable amount of distance between this property and the surrounding neighbors.
I have no further questions for this witness. Does anyone in the board have any questions for this witness? I'll ask just one or two quick ones. The garage is staying where it is, shed's staying where it is, that's not changing, right?
Correct.
All right. And the driveway is basically about the same as where it is now.
Correct.
Okay. And just for clarification, you probably have, eh, a third of the property is unusable because of the riparian and the stone wall, the stone wall, the creek? The brook, I guess?
I would say in that ballpark, yes.
Yes, plus or minus, right. Okay. Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make any comments? Back to you.
I weigh my summation.
You usually do. Okay. Does anyone in the board want to make any comments? Would someone in the board like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes. Mr. Horn. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Sohel? Oh, you're not wording, sorry. Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who seconded? Thank you, Peter.
I did. Block 1,000, lot 1270, West McLellan Avenue. Application number 2025-49-V, XSC Investments LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section. 170-99C4, rear yard setback 35 feet required. 32.8 feet proposed, 2.2 feet variance requested. 170-87CC4, habitable floor area ratio, 30% allowed. 34.35% proposed, 4.35% variance requested.
Good evening again. My name is Matthew Passata again. I'm from the law firm Sils Commiss and Gross, and I'm representing the applicant here tonight. In connection with this application, as previously stated, it is for both a ratio variance and also a rear yard setback variance. The applicant is here tonight proposing to demolish the existing single-family home and develop a new single-family home. The site itself is undersized, and that is what's triggering the leaf here today. You're going to hear testimony that's already been presented, the survey itself. And when you look at the survey, you're going to see that the rear property line is not running parallel to the front property line, but rather it angles in. And because of that, that triggers the rear yard setback, and it also causes, not in its entirety, but definitely is a contributing variable as to why we have a ratio variance. Despite the fact that we do have a ratio variance, we are below the habitable floor area that is permitted for the R4 zone. With that being said, I have two witnesses tonight. My first is my architect, my second is my planner. So I'd like to call my architect up first, Robert.
Okay. Do you swear a firm, tell the truth to the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Emert, E-M-E-R-T, Jr.
Okay. And Mr. Emert has been before this board in the past, has been qualified as an architect in the past. Mr. Emert, your license is current in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Chairman?
Does anyone in the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Okay. Just briefly, the siding of the house on the lot. We pulled the house all the way forward to the 40-yard setback because we were dealing, as Matt mentioned, dealing with the sort of irregular-shaped rear lot line, the angle back there. So we pulled the house as far forward as we could, and we complied with the side yard setbacks, the side yard combined. And as Matt mentioned, just the two variances we're looking for. The house is a fairly typical two-story, sort of off-center colonial. We have the... Is the floor plan not on here?
No.
Okay. So it's pretty straightforward. Upstairs, we have four bedrooms, bathrooms, a laundry room on the first floor to the right side. And I'm just going to go back to the site plan. On the right side, we have the garage on the right side. We were trying to take advantage of the natural lighting and open it up on the other side. And on the first floor is two-car garage, mudroom leads into the kitchen. Breakfast, or not even a breakfast room, an island. Family room, opening up onto the rear. Dining room, small little living room, sitting room, and a front entry porch. Or a front, small front entry. So it's a pretty straightforward house. And when we're designing it, you know, and with the elevations, we were looking, or I was looking to, you know, as far as the masting and everything, in this part of McLean, there's been a lot of newer homes, a lot of larger homes and stuff. And so we were just trying to pick up on the character, the sizing of the houses in that area. It's an area going through transition and, so, but, you know, a fairly straightforward gable front roof. You know, small roof covering at the garage area. I think that summarizes it.
And what about the roof accessibility, I mean, the attic accessibility?
It's a pull-down, pull-down stairs. There'll be, you know, by energy code these days, you need about 16 inches of insulation. Then there'll be, so there's not going to be any living space, just mechanical space up there.
So just to confirm, the attic couldn't be converted to habitable space?
No.
Great. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone in the board have any questions for this witness?
I just have one question. Just on the, on the left side yard, it shows like a, is that, it looks like there's a fireplace bump out?
Yeah, the chimney.
And that's, but that is extending into the side yard because it's showing a 9.1 feet?
All right, yes. It's shown on the, on the engineers. But it's, by ordinance, chimneys are allowed to project into side yard setbacks. That's why on mine, I don't show it because it's allowed to.
Okay.
That was one of my questions, so thank you, Todd. My other is, and I know it's just a little bit, and I do see, you know, the, it's a little shorter. You got, this distance is 12 feet under the minimum for the length of the property. But I do see, you know, and it was very good the way you put the boundaries of the setbacks. Was there a reason you didn't use all the extra space to the right with the 15, 15.7-foot setback? Because it seems like you could have had a lot of room there to still stay within the code and move that portion of the house back. So is there some reason why you didn't use any of that space to get the square footage? Do you see what I'm talking about? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Well, you're talking about this 15 foot seven here?
Yeah, and you got a lot of room.
Sliding the house to the right.
Not sliding to the right, but you could have built out, you could have built out to the, to the right instead of building to the back.
Okay, I mean, to the right, as you can see, right in this area, it's, the two-car garage is there. So, you know, to, to push that to the right doesn't serve, you know, I mean, there's extra storage, but as far as doing that, it doesn't serve any purpose. Behind that, we have a small, I believe, it's 11 by 11, some, just a small bedroom there and a bathroom. So to go to the right, I mean, it's already at, I'm using 11 feet, I don't have it open, but it's not a very big bedroom. And to compress it and make it like a nine-foot wide or something in order and go longer just makes it a very awkward space where, you know, and if you look at it, we were able to, starting from the left side, and for the majority of that rear yard, were able to stay, you know, comply with the, with the setback. It just got to be that one small, you know, little triangular corner, that small little corner right there is the only place. And so to answer your question, to go to the right just would have made a very awkward room, and that's why I didn't do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the board?
I have a question. How is the attic accessed?
It's a pull-down stair, and it will not be used, you know, it's going to be used for mechanical space and attic insulation.
Anybody else on the board?
Quick question. You are proposing a habitable area of .35?
Correct.
Where it is .3 is allowed, is that due to the smaller size of the lot? Is that what's creating that variance?
You know, it's the smaller size of the lot, there's a fraction, you know, some of it's coming from going, adding to a two-car garage, and a little bit of that adds in. And then, you know, just trying to go for the four, you know, a four-bedroom house versus a three-bedroom house, which is more practical.
So your garage is more than 450 square feet?
Lightly, yes.
Anybody else on the board? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay.
Terrific. I'd like to call my last witness, Mr. Nick Graviano.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, so are you in again? Do you swear a firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Graviano's already been qualified, and I'm sure in the past few minutes, nothing has changed with regard to his credentials.
I just checked my email, everything's okay.
He knew where I was going. Chair?
I, you can be accepted as a expert in planning.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is an application for Block 1000, Lot 12, 70 West McLellan Avenue. The applicant is proposing a new two-story, single-family detached dwelling. The applicant is requiring two variances, first for the rear yard setback, 35 feet is required, 32.8 is proposed, it's a variance of 2.2 feet. It is for that very small triangle in the back right corner of the dwelling. It's, it's very minimal in nature. I would like to note that if you look at the, the survey, it's a convergence of multiple rear yards, so there's really no one significantly impacted from that rear yard setback variance request. As you heard in architectural testimony, the bulk of the rear of that house meets the rear yard setback. The configuration of the property necessitates that rear yard setback variance. The applicant is also requesting a 5% habitable floor area ratio variance. I would like to note that the applicant is under the maximum habitable floor area, whereas 3220 is required, 3181 is proposed with this application. Looking at some of the other zoning characteristics of the proposed dwelling, the applicant is exceeding the side yard setback, the aggregate side yard, sorry, side yard setback, and the building coverage ratio of 24.1% is required. The applicant's structure is actually 1.9% less than what's required at 22.2%. Looking at that habitable floor area ratio variance request, the applicant must demonstrate that the site can accommodate the proposed dwelling, withstanding the deviation in the habitable floor area ratio requirement. The applicant is, for the most part, meeting all the setback requirements, except for that small corner in the backyard. The applicant's building coverage ratio is less than what's required by ordinance, and the applicant is providing adequate off-street parking for the proposed dwelling. This relief certainly could be granted advancing purposes of zoning in the municipal land use law, specifically Purpose A, promotion of the general health, morals, and welfare. The applicant is providing a new, single-family dwelling built under modern codes and, and building requirements. Additionally, it promotes Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And then lastly, the impeccably designed dwelling certainly helps create a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. There's no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of that habitable floor area ratio variance. The home is under the maximum habitable floor area requirement. Looking at the request of rear yard setback variance, that certainly could be granted under the C2 criteria, advancing the same purposes of zoning A, G, and I that I indicated with the D4 FAR variance analysis. That variance can also be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and the as-built and conditions of the lot line certainly do not create any substantial detriment to the surrounding property owners with the granting of that variance.
I have no further questions.
And I, Mr. Graviano, I think there was just some misunderstanding, maybe, maybe there was a misunderstanding from what you were saying, a couple of board members. So you would agree with me that the only variances that are being asked for in this application for 70 West McLellan Avenue is for the rear yard setback for that little corner, correct?
The small triangle of 2.2 feet, yes.
And the habitable floor area ratio deviation, correct?
Correct.
There are no other variances, correct?
Any other variance would be an existing condition, not augmented by this application.
There are no other variances.
There are no other variances, okay. I think that's where the, the board was, was, had a little, maybe disconnect, but, okay, so it's two, the two variances, okay. Chair? Thank you for the clarification. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make a statement regarding this application? Back to you.
I weigh my summation.
Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? And does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kenney, Mr. Horn is out. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Block 1402, Lot 38, 16 Countryside Drive, application number 2025-50-V. Punit Vishwas and Nikita Vijayavargi. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new, single-family house in violation of the following section, 170-99C4, rear yard setback 35 feet required, 31 feet proposed, 4 feet variance requested. 170-87L1D, front yard corner lot, yard setback 35 required, 24.77 feet proposed, 10.23 feet variance requested.
Okay. So, sir and ma'am, you're the, you're the property owners, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you have one witness, your architect, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get, Mr., should we start by getting him sworn in, hearing his testimony?
Sure.
All right, do you swear a firm and tell the truth for the zoning court tonight?
I do.
Okay, and we've had Ms. Cedra here on many occasions.
Yes.
Qualified as an architect. I'm sure, Ms., that your credentials to practice architecture in the great state of New Jersey are up to date.
Correct.
Chairman? As we all, first time we've seen you today, I'll say, does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture. Okay, you're up.
Good evening. I'm going to start reviewing this project with you. This is a corner lot in R4 zone. We're applying for two variances. As you know, in the corner lots, we have two fronts. The front on County, Countryside Drive, we need the, the front yard setback, which is 40 feet, and we are proposing 40 feet. The other front, which is the one on Beverly, we, the required by code is 35 feet, we are proposing 24.77, and the existing structure at 22.74. This is the first variance. The second variance we're applying for is the rear yard, where is 30 feet is required, oh, sorry, yeah, 35 feet is required, we are at 31 feet. This house is a colonial-style home with having all the living spaces in the first floor, and the second floor consists of all the sleeping area. We have four bedrooms at the second floor with its own bathrooms and closets. And the basement will consist of one big recreational area. Also, we have a bedroom, and also we have access to the backyard through a stair that connects the basement to the outside. Regarding the floor area ratio, we are below the requirement. We are at 25.87, where it's 30% required, and we are maxed on the habitable floor area, where the code requests 3220, and we are at 3220. The exterior of the building, let me see if I can get that. This is the exterior of the building. It's a colonial-style home with a symmetrical arrangement. We have casement windows, board and baton on top, on the gable ends, and we have lap siding at the vertical walls. Also, we have stone in some areas, like above the garage door and also above the entry of the house. We have a standing seam roof in some areas, like the front porch and above the garage, and the main roof is asphalt chingo roof. So this is the front, and this is the rear. We have balcony of the rear, and also we have a covered patio or a covered porch, if you want to call it that, at the rear of the property. This is the side that faces Beverly. As you see, you know, it's a very, you know, the window's very well arranged on the elevations. And this is the, the right side elevation as well. It's, the window's very well arranged there. Now, I have two exhibits that I, that I'd like to present. One of them is the, the rendering for the house.
Here, when you pull it up, we'll call that A1.
Yes.
Okay, so this rendering has not been previously submitted.
Correct.
So, and we're going to call it Exhibit A1, which is a colorized rendering.
Yes, so the rendering presents the materials that we're proposing. It's white and black facades, where we have white walls, black windows, black roofs, and dark asphalt chingo roofs. And as I said, we have stones above the garage area and the entry foyer. This is one exhibit. The other exhibit that I'd like to present shows the setback of the neighboring properties, which is this. This is the subject property. Can we call this?
We'll call this A2.
A2.
It's the overhead of home locations in the neighborhood.
So this one shows the, the subject property where it says 16, and, and we have the note here. This is the, the setback we are proposing from Beverly, 24.77. This is the house next door, which is 55 North Ashby Avenue. The setback on this house is 15.4. This is going, again, in Beverly here, 56 North Ashby Avenue. The setback on Beverly is 14.7, and the next one is 34.1. So as you will see here, you know, the, the proposed, the side yard setback falls in, in, in the same, or close from the same dimensions that the other house reads, or even, even it's more, more setback than the rest of the houses on the same, same street. Also, I would like to mention that the rear yard, the variance that we're applying for, for the rear yard, let me open the other one. So this is the site plan here. As you see, the 31 feet, actually, it's going to the covered porch, but we have a very big distance from the main house to the rear proper, 47 feet. So just the porch that lands within the variance limits. I think that's everything I have.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, I, I do. So in your drawing, you were showing that you had a porch, I mean, the walkout porch in front of the front door, main door, and the garage, but in your rendering, it wasn't there.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, say it again.
The exhibit, the exhibit didn't have it.
The one before? So what was your question again?
So in, in the drawings, in your blueprint, you had the, like a balcony on the top of the main, main door and the garage. Yeah.
No, that's just his name. It's what he's got.
Okay, no, I misunderstand. Thank you.
Where is the balcony?
That's the rear, rear of the house, yeah.
Your existing lot is almost 3,000 square feet more than what's allowed in this zone. Yet you are asking for habitable floor area ratio, a rear yard variance and a front yard variance.
Correct. We're not asking for habitable floor.
No, no.
Just a rear yard and a front yard.
Ratio, ratio.
No ratio, no. No habitable floor or ratio.
Oh, sorry, okay. So I just feel that, and, and you showed other homes that are in the neighborhood, which are closer to the lot line, not knowing what the lot sizes are, I cannot, cannot comment on why they are closer to the lot. But knowing that your lot is larger than what's allowed in this area, violating the two yards, I think, is a bit excessive. So is there a way that we can compromise on?
I mean, the existing house was even less of a dimension to the property line. We are stepping the house back to more feet, but given the width of the lot, if I take 40 feet from here and 40 feet, I don't really, I have a very skinny house, how I'm going to design that.
I mean, there has, there could be a way that we can...
Now, let me, let me ask you, because we did an average, we did average front calculation, which you have, I think, on the survey. which you have, I think, on the survey. You guys have this exhibit, right? The survey, the original survey. They have done a study for the neighboring properties. And property number 10 and 12 and 14, they're in County Side Drive. They're all within 36 feet, 35.5, 37.5, and even the existing house was in that limit, these limits. I think the existing house is 35, is it? If I keep my front as 35.7, I can avoid the rear yard variance and you take advantage of the average front. Would that be acceptable as a solution for this?
I personally would rather see that than see the rear yard, because I know the other lots on North Ashby are also smaller lots, so I'd rather push that to the front than, and then keep the 35-foot rear.
Yeah. So, that could be another solution. It will eliminate the rear yard variance.
But also, the 35 of the existing house is only at one corner. It's not along the entire facade.
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, if I follow the 35 feet, they're not getting a backyard. I'm gonna create a box, a skinny box, and they're not gonna get any backyard.
So, just so I'm following along here, because one of the things the board really shouldn't do is redesign applications. Again, certainly make suggestions, and it's up to the applicant to take those suggestions in order to make, potentially make the application more compliant. And you have a very good architect who's here many, many times, and he's before this board. I know this is your first time here before this board, so you're probably wondering what's going on. There's a lot of back and forth, and you may be a little bit out of sorts, but this is, you know, your architect is here quite often, and he knows the areas that the board often has levels of concern about. And so, what you're saying is that there's a way, that the applicant would consider amending the plans slightly to eliminate the...
The rear yard.
The rear yard variance, which is currently, 24.77 is proposed, but that would...
That's the side, the rear is...
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Well, that's because Mr. Shaw was pointing to the wrong thing.
The rear is 31 feet.
So, the, you would remove that four-foot, you, your amended plans that you would submit would be, would remain with the front side corner setback, but would eliminate the rear yard setback. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And you feel that in your capacity, in your professional opinion as an architect, that can be done without major complication to...
Correct, to the application.
Okay.
But again, we will have a front yard variance, two front yard variances in this case, because even though we're using the average, it's still a variance as a front yard.
Okay, so wait, wait, wait. So, what you're saying, wait, wait, so, that's where I thought we were going. Okay. So, in order to, you would agree with me that in order to eliminate the rear yard variance, what you're in essence suggesting to do is to push the home in such a way as it creates a new variance on County Side Drive?
Correct.
I have a question, why? Because I thought that if it's the average within the 200 feet, you're allowed without getting a variance.
You have to remember technically that the, remember, the variance is created, there's an allowance in the ordinance to say that if the average is below a certain level, that you're within the average, that that's the justification for granting the variance, so that there is automatically built into the ordinance that there is a variance condition, because, right, we have a set, we have a standard, but that's saying that if the home averages with others, that that's a sufficient basis under the code to say that you're, you should be given that relief. So, he is creating, so technically, there is a creation of a variance, but there is, the point is that that variance would then be mollified by the fact that the other homes meet the same front yard. Is that correct, Mr. Cedra?
Correct.
I knew you'd agree with me. So, all right, so wait, wait, wait. Once again, we're not here to redesign the home or redo the application, but this is something that Mr. Cedra is saying that can be done with regard to this particular application, with regard to these particular applicants, so.
Do you want to make a comment?
I'm just saying that, well, why, why don't we just keep it the way it is? I mean, what difference does it make? Why create another variance or move it around? It's fine, because it's enough space in the back and side, so just leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from other people on the board.
Well, I concur with Mr. Kenya. I'm not really sure why we're moving it around. I think it's, I don't really have a problem. It's a large enough lot. It's a large enough lot. It's 12,000 square feet. It's larger than proposed, so I have no problem with the size of where it is right now.
Mr. Weissman?
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm, because I'm with Lori on this as well, but one of the reasons I am is because it's sort of a trade-off. The, with respect to the backyard, I'll say this to Todd, I'm more concerned about the neighbors. With respect to the front yard, I'm more concerned about the community and the look, so there's trade-offs. So, my question, I just want to confirm that the, and this is to Todd too, that why I'm not as concerned, because I believe that you're maxing out on the floor area ratio. Is that correct?
Not at all, no. We're not maxed on...
Not the ratio, I'm sorry, no, no, I meant to say the floor area.
The habitable floor area, yes.
So, I believe that this porch that's encroaching, I believe that's not included in your habitable floor area, correct? Because it's outside.
The porch, yeah, it's, yeah.
So, so you could not, that porch cannot be enclosed or used as a habitable room in any way?
Correct.
So, I just wanted to confirm, like, later on, you can't go in and close that without coming back here.
And this can be a condition, actually, for approval. We don't mind that as a condition.
So, that's why it's a little different for me.
But the porch is supported with columns. There is no enclosed wall.
Right, it can't be closed in. You'd have to come back here for a square footage variance, right?
Exactly. This can be a condition for the approval.
I was gonna, well, I was gonna ask for that condition. I don't know if it's, leave it to Joe. I don't even know if it's necessary, because you can't build any more square feet, but that was the condition for me, that it's open. It's a lot easier to handle.
I think that, while it's pretty clear that that porch cannot be enclosed, otherwise it creates a violation of the zoning code, we'll certainly, I think it's certainly appropriate to put it in just to advise the applicant, and of course, at some point, you may sell the home, and we want that other person to know what the parameters are that this board would give in terms of an approval. Just so you're following along. Mr. Cedra, with regard to the variances that are being sought with regard to the rear yard setback and the corner yard setback, I think your, would it be fair to say that your argument with regard to the corner setback is that it's, you're making it similar to the township's standard with regard to front yards, so that when you look across at everybody's front yard and you say, okay, everybody's at 25 feet, the standard is 30, but everybody is at 25, so I should have that relief at 25? You're in essence using that same theory of like a C2 standard as to the corner yard, there's just a lot of words here, front side corner yard setback, right?
Correct.
You would agree with me on that? Now, as to the rear yard setback, are you saying that that's a physical constraint, or is that some type of flexible zoning alternative? In terms of the, in terms of the rear yard? I mean, you kind of, you kind of have identified that the rear yard is activated by virtue of the porch, which we all know is not gonna be habitable space at any point in the future.
Correct, yeah. It's not the building, it's just the porch.
So, in essence, would it be fair to say that you're saying that the location of the porch, because it adds to the usage of the exterior and to the enjoyment of these people's home and kind of the unusual corner lot shape, where it's more square than rectangular, that for those reasons, you're asking for the rear yard setback?
Yep.
See, even, even somebody else other than Mr. Pasada can, can, can carry the ball on these things. Okay.
Does anybody else on the board have any comments for this witness?
I have. I just feel that this is a huge patio or covered porch. It looks like it's about, do you know the square footage of it?
Yeah, yes, let me look that up.
102.
You got it from the architecture?
From your plans, it says 102. I'm sorry, it's elevation, my bad, sorry.
You, and you're the engineer.
Yeah, but he's a surveyor.
It's 560, I said.
560?
560, what he said.
Your building bridge, you see, you know the height.
560.
So, my comment...
That's, that's the whole porch, but not the whole porch is covered.
Okay. My comment slash question is, I believe, you know, that porch, a huge porch, the size of it triggered the backyard variance, so I'm not trying to design for you, but that's my feeling that, that huge porch, I've never, I haven't seen a porch this big.
Okay.
And I feel like it triggers the variance, and could that be revised to reduce the variance, amount of variance that you're seeking? That's my comment slash question.
Can I have a minute with my client?
Sure.
Just a quick minute.
Take your time. All right, it looks like the team is reconvened. Okay. Back from commercial break.
Now, the porch is going out 16 feet. If I cut 4 feet from that, it's gonna be 12 feet. It's not gonna be big enough for them to use, but the width, the width of the porch is big. If, it will help to reduce the size of it a little bit, we can, but the variance still exists.
Right.
It's not gonna eliminate the variance.
Okay. So, the applicant is going to proceed with requesting the rear yard setback at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for this witness? Anybody in the board and the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a statement?
I just want to say, I mean, it's a 30-foot wide covered porch. If there was a way to modify that, because your steps are also encroaching into the rear yard, if there was some...
We can shrink it a little bit.
Yeah, to make that so that it's compatible with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Can you propose a number, so we could put on the record? Otherwise, we can't do anything if you want to, or keep it as a thing.
But it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter, because the variance condition is gonna, it's gonna be the same. It's, it's, would in essence be a field change, if they're gonna do something, you know...
I feel this, this area, yeah, I mean, we can remove this area, the 11 foot seven and quarter, the uncovered area, if that's any help. I mean, but the variance still exists.
All right, but, all right, all we're talking about is the variance.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, the variance is gonna continue, or is being, continue to be requested.
Okay. Someone would like to make a motion? Somebody?
What? I'll make a motion to approve.
You didn't, you had one?
I'll make a motion to...
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Kenya? Yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
No.
Okay, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms., okay, Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carriage. Okay, let's move it. Okay, Block 1301, Lot 4, 37th Congressional Parkway, application number 2025-43-3, Daniel Chelchowski. Applicant seeks approval for the rare addition in violation of the following section. 170-99C2, front yard setback 40 feet required, 24.88 feet proposed, which is existing, 15.12 feet variance requested. 170-99C3, right yard setback 10 feet required, 7.09 feet proposed, which is existing, 2.91 variance requested. 170-99C3, left yard, left side yard setback 10 feet required, 5.83 proposed, which happens to be existing, 4.17 feet variance requested. 170-99C3, aggregated side yard setback, side yard setback 30% required, 25.84% proposed, 4.16% variance requested. 170-87CC4, habitable floor area ratio 30%, allowed, 43.22% proposed, 13.22% variance requested.
Okay, so, who, and I'm gonna, you gotta be kind, because I'm gonna mispronounce. Cheklauski?
That's, that's me, I'm the architect.
Okay. And are you the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so you have, you're, you're the builder?
Architect.
Architect?
Yes.
Okay. There was this smell of candy that was causing issues. Okay. Sir, do you swear a firm, tell the truth? Sir, do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
All right, can you do us the favor of stating and spelling your name for the record?
Sure, it's Daniel Chelchowski, C H E L, C H of W S K I. Licensed architect in New Jersey. First time in front of this board. My license is current and in good standing. Bachelor's degree of, at NJIT in two thousand and twelve. License since two thousand and twenty one.
Chairman?
And your license is current and in good standing?
Correct.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as expert in architecture.
Excuse me. So this project involves the alteration and expansion of a split level, single family home to improve the overall function and layout. The scope includes a new rear addition and a second floor extension above the right side of the home to create a more usable bedroom space. While the project expands the structure, the design has been carefully considered to, to remain contextual to the neighborhood and, and consistent with nearby homes in terms of height, massing, and architectural character. We are requesting the following variances, and I'll briefly explain each one and our reasoning, and then I'll walk everyone through the existing plans and the proposed, so everyone understands the plans. The right side yard setback, the variance requested, the requirement is ten feet. The existing is seven point zero nine feet. This variance pertains to the second floor extension above the right side of the home. The existing ground level and first, first level wall remain unchanged. But we are continuing vertically to create full height walls where there were previously sloped ceilings on the second floor. So we're just basically extending those walls to create full height ceilings in that area. With no lateral expansion in that setback. The left side yard setback, so the existing is, is five point eight three feet. We are not proposing any construction on that side. The left side of the home remains unchanged in footprint and height. The aggregate side yards, the required is thirty percent, our proposed is twenty five point eight four percent. The reduced aggregate is due entirely to the existing non-conforming side yard conditions from the original construction, so no new footprint contributes to this condition. The front yard setback, so the minimum required is forty, forty feet. I think this is the R four zone. Yes, R four zone, so forty feet. We, we obtained an established front yard setback by averaging adjacent properties, which came to thirty nine point three feet. The existing home is setback thirty nine point five two feet from the right away, and the proposed second floor extension is setback further at forty three point sixty six feet. Therefore, we're not increasing any of the non-conformity there as well. The habitable floor area ratio, the allowance is thirty percent and the proposed is forty three point twenty two percent. The habitable floor area remains under the maximum allowed square footage. The thirty two hundred and twenty square feet for the lot, we're actually at twenty one, twenty one sixty one square feet, so we're, we're well below the, the actual habitable floor area. The higher ratio results from the undersized lot, not from the excessive, not from excessive massing. The lot is five thousand square feet and the required in that area is nine thousand three hundred seventy five. On a standard lot, this, this design would not trigger, you know, any variance, not even close. The request is proportional and appropriate for the site conditions, we believe. So let me, let me just walk you through some of the spaces.
I, I don't, I don't think the board really needs to, you know. However, the interior of the house is set up, you know, people want to have bedrooms, they want to have bathrooms. That's understandable. I guess the real question is, maybe before you heard it, attic access is how?
So it, it's a split level home, so, so the, the home already has attic access to the left side, which is basically a crawl space area. And then the, the new area above is also crawl space area, five feet tops.
At, at the ridge line?
At the ridge line, it'd be about seven feet. But the collar ties holding it together would be about five feet.
So if you want to get, to get into that space, you get into it from-
You kind of have to go to one attic and crawl your way up to the, to the next one. There, there's an access panel within that bedroom.
There's no, there's not a defined set of stairs to that area?
Correct, no.
And looking at your elevations, doesn't even seem like there's enough space for somebody to crawl from one attic to the other.
There is.
It's a very, very small.
Yeah, I mean, that, that attic space is limited, limited to mechanical space.
Sure.
And that's about it.
I have a question, I don't know if anybody would be able to answer this. Do we know the history of this lot? Like, was it subdivided? It's so, why is it five, do you know anything about the size? Like, why this is five thousand per-
I saw some of the, the lots adjacent to it, and they seem to be similar, similarly sized.
No, I know it's a small street, and we've had, a couple of years ago, several years ago, we did a subdivision on that street, and the houses are small, and the lots are small. But I just was wondering if you knew the history of this lot? No, okay.
No.
I have a quick question. On the site plan, there's a bump out in the back, which I don't see what that is.
So that, that hashed area is actually the existing. There's a, there's a further line out that points to the addition, and that's the, that's the actual addition. And, and we kept that addition within the setbacks as we tried to maintain, you know, those setbacks with any new addition. We're really just, in the area that we're going up with the second floor, they have sloped ceilings, and we're extending those, those walls to create, you know, full height ceilings in that bedroom.
So you're staying on the existing footprint?
The, yes.
And you're just going up?
In the, in the, in that right area. And then the addition in the back, that one goes up, but that's within the setbacks.
So just to be clear, the, the setbacks and the aggregate side yard are all, in essence, pre-existing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the only new variance that's part of this application in reality is the FAR?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody who's remaining in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements regarding this application? Does anybody on the board want to make any statements?
I'll make a statement. I think this is really tough. And I have to say that the way that this house was designed was really in accordance with the small size of this lot. I think it's incredibly difficult to build a house on this size lot. So I think that the design fits within the, the streetscape because of, although a lot of those houses on that street have been developed. So I appreciate that you took that into consideration when you did this, and I know that this is not an easy, this was not an easy task. So I do appreciate that, and it definitely fits in with how the, how that street is, you know, being developed.
Thank you.
No, I would just, I would say the same thing, so. Great minds think alike.
Oh, it's three for three, and I, I do appreciate, you know, you're not trying to squeeze in a two car garage. People want that and everything else. As my colleague said, this is a very difficult spot, and I think you did a nice job trying to give the owner some more space without trying to take over, you know, the, the whole, the airspace, so.
Does anybody want to, do you want to make a statement or?
I'll make, I just want to give the four for four, just to say the same thing. And, and I mean, in this case, I mean, you know, with your, you know, you know, the habitable floor ratio, I mean, yes, while it seems like it's like double digits or whatever, it is a very small lot. You're not, what you're asking for is nowhere near egregious, you know, as far as the, the square footage of the habitable floor area, you know, of the house. So, you know, overall, you're still well below what's allowed, so.
Well, someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
You're just too slow down there.
Okay, Ms. Kenya, yes, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carriage, congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to come by and see it. I drive by there all the time, I'm excited to see it when it's done.
Thank you. Block, block three thousand and one, lot four, twenty Hampton Terrace. Application number twenty twenty five dash fifty six dash V. Rorac Homes Inc. Incorporated. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new family, new single family house in violation of the following section. One seven zero dash eighty seven CC, habitable floor area ratio, twenty one percent allowed, twenty six point nine nine percent proposed, five point nine nine percent variance requested.
The board, John Barbarula, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, we have two witnesses, Amon and also Nick Graviano. At this time, I would have Amon just sworn in.
Did you actually call him Graviano?
What'd I say? Did I call him?
No, 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 I was, I was shocked that you actually called him Graviano instead of Graziano.
Graziano, whatever.
There must, there must be something-
It's the Italian kid to my right.
There must, there must be something in those-
Listen, as long as I pay for dinner, he doesn't care what I call him.
There must be, there must be something in those, those shots. All right, so we're going to start with, with architect, Ms. Cedra? All right, Ms. Cedra, we swear you're in both, do it again. Do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. And obviously, Ms. Cedra has been already qualified as a field of architecture.
We can accept him as, as an expert in architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amon, you've fully familiar with the property, and you've developed all of, all of the plans that have been submitted to the board.
Yes.
Can you please give the board the benefit of your plans and explain the aspects of the variance for the floor area ratio?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're missing a couple sheets here. Can I use my file instead? So this, we, it's a single family house, it's a brand new house. We're designing this house with the living spaces being at the first floor. We have also a guest bedroom located at the first floor. The area for the first floor is one thousand six eighty four, that's the livable area. And the garage area is four fifty nine. The next sheet, the next drawing shows the basement is one, one open space. It's going to be used for recreational, and we have a guest bedroom or another bedroom in the basement, a small playroom, mechanical and a bathroom. The second floor will be used as a sleeping, for the sleeping area. We have four bedrooms with its own bathrooms and closet. We have a laundry room. We have a pull down stair to access the attic. The design of the outside is colonial style home with a gable roof. From the front, we also have a balcony at the front of the building. We have casement windows, board embatten on top, and horizontal lap siding at the wall surfaces, and also we have a stone base, a stone entry, and stone above the garage entrance. This is the rear of the house. The family room, it's a single story family room. We have also a balcony at the back. And this is the other two sides where it matches the, the character of the design. The, regarding the floor area ratio, the livable area at the first floor is one thousand six eighty four. The second floor is one thousand eight hundred and two, with a total of three thousand four ninety five. We are at twenty six point nine nine percent. We also have a seventy five square feet of an open foyer, counted twice but only used once. The attic is not going to be habitable, it's just accessible through a pull down stair. And the height of the attic, we have eight foot six from the, from the attic floor to the, to the ridge beam, with the collar tie being at five foot six. The building height here is thirty three, three and a half, so we're still within the standard of the required building height by ordinance. The ordinance calls for thirty five feet, and we are at thirty three, three and a half, so.
So the only variance is the floor area?
This is the only variance we're applying for, yes.
Okay, and the setbacks are all in keeping with the municipal ordinance?
Correct.
And the lower level has a window access for the utilization of the basement? So it fully complies with current fire codes and statutes? Mr. Chairman, on the basis of the testimony of Amon, I submit him for any questions to the board.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Well, please come forward. Come up to the mic. And this is, yes, and this is for a question. You want to make a statement, that'll be later. So if you want to ask a specific question, yes, please, go forward. Just want to make sure everyone understands the rules. It's new for a lot of people.
I live in the plot just next to it. Oh, sorry.
Question?
For questions, just, we need your name and address.
All right, my name is Samya Rajan, R A J A N, and I live in twenty two Hampton Terrace, the plot just next to it. So my question is, this plot is going like deep because the plots are long and not like wide. So, and like, they have a pool currently there, so they are probably covering up the pool there. So my concern is privacy for my plot. This looks like high too. Will they, how will I have some privacy in my backyard is my concern? Like, will they put like private, privacy trees or, you know, what will be there for me? In terms of privacy in the backyard, what can be done from there and?
Okay, so let me, let me say this, first, well, that's a valid concern. Val, you know, I'm sure Mr. Barbarula is, is dying to give you an answer on that question. But just, you know, be aware that there, there are no variances for this project with regard to any of the bulks, no, to the sides or the rear or the front. Mr. Barbarula, otherwise, do you want to, maybe you were, Cedric?
I would say, which, because I have a good relationship with this applicant. If you give me your name and email, I would have the project manager contact you. They, we're more than happy to try to address your concerns. Because we don't have any variances, but we're more than happy to try to make neighbors happy. So if you could give me, if you'd write down your full name, a telephone number, and an email, I will pass it on to- email, I will pass it on to the owner.
Okay.
And I would have asked them to contact you about your concerns.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll do that.
Okay.
I have one more question. I don't know if it'll be something similar to what you mentioned. I was concerned, how does the board or, you know, everyone take care? The thing is, I'm concerned about flooding in the backyard. If they construct this, will that impact any, or will my plot have any kind of flooding because of the construction that's happening there?
So let me, so let me say this. Once again, that's something that's not in, within the jurisdiction of the board. However, let me say this. No homeowner should be affected by another property's development that causes them any sort of damage or what we call, Mr. Barbarula and I, Mr. Graviano, when we went to law school, nuisance, okay? So that, that should not, that should not happen. And Mr. Barbarula's client, like every other developer, has an obligation to meet certain standards under law in terms of the building code. And so that would be something that would be handled by the building department and code enforcement to ensure that the property stays within that level of compliance. And these plans and everything get reviewed by township engineering office so that nobody is building anything without a permit and that everybody who's building something meets proper code. So that if, to avoid situation where there is any runoff or any water that would be directed onto your property, that would be one, that would be handled through them. And then, secondly, if you ever, if you were to have a problem, you would bring it to code enforcement in the township and identify it to them. But Mr. Barbarula?
Any, anytime you build in Livingston, first of all, as, as the attorney has indicated, you have to go through a review by the municipal engineer and building department. Every lot has, when you do any kind of new construction, you have to handle your runoff on your own property. So you can easily talk to the building department because Livingston is very strict in their compliance and they have a review process. So if, and if we were lucky enough to get approval here, the applicant still has to get the plans approved, which is basically, they got to get the building plans and the site plan. And they would have, you would be able to then talk to the building department about what positive drainage they have. And they are done a number of different ways. All the roof gutters go into, recharge into the ground. Any type of condition on the property, they would have to have swales. So I could tell you, and the, the people here, they live, everybody here lives in the town and they're all concerned. The town is very specific about meeting the building requirements and the site development. So that's something that's done after we can get approval. But again, I will get, if you, your concerns about the, your privacy and the building, you give me the information, I'll make sure somebody contacts you.
Understood. Thank you. And it remains the same even if it happens after the building is constructed and people move in, we approach the county if.
You approach the town, right?
Yeah, the town, all right.
Now, you could, you could be, if you're on a hill, a certain amount of water is going to go. They're responsible for no additional water. To try to clarify that a little bit, right? So if you do currently get some water, they will do their best to make sure there's, they are not allowed to have any additional water and they always do their best to keep all the water on their site anyway because they don't want to have pissed-off neighbors. So. But that's every application. That's automatic, right?
All right. That was new, so I wanted to.
Of course. Now, that's why we want you to come forward so we can let you know what's going on so you can be rest assured that the town watches out for its town folk.
Thank you.
But we have another one. Yeah, just.
My name is Renjit Ramakumar. I live in the same property. We are husband and wife. I have a question to the architect.
Of course, go ahead.
I fully understand, so bear it in mind, I'm asking the question the way I understand. From the garage door right now on the property to the last wall at the back of the property on the side of 22 Hampton Terrace, what percentage are you increasing and in which direction? Backward, frontward?
The garage is entering from the front. So what percentage?
My question is not the entrance part. From where the garage is starting, like current garage door is standing, let's imagine this is the garage door. And the house is built backwards.
Yes.
Yeah?
How far it's going out backwards?
Right now, it is at a certain point. It is ending right next to where the 22 Hampton Terrace wall is ending.
This is the old house.
I apologize. I don't understand the term setbacks.
If you're talking about how deep it is?
I think what the gentleman is saying is there's, there's an existing condition.
Right. I think that's what he wants, yeah, I think that's what he's trying to get at.
The home goes back from the garage to the back wall of the home, a certain distance. There's now more back there. What he's trying to ask is how much more is being put back there.
Thank you for clarifying. I do not know whether it is more, and I also do not understand whether it is more towards the back or to the front. So if there is a picture or a, you can describe.
No, no, I just wanted to understand your question. Thank you.
Sure.
Is this like 20, 28 feet?
So we're talking about what the current distance is and what the new distance is? That's what you're really interested in?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I thought that, I just want to make sure we got the same question we're answering.
I mean, the, the current front yard on the existing site is 35 feet, but we are proposing 50 feet, so.
Going back 15 more feet, which is compliance with the ordinance.
Your house is the house on the left, right?
If you look.
When facing the 20.
Yes.
So this house is going to start pretty much like halfway into your sidewall. Okay, so your house at 35 feet 50 and this house is starting at 50. So we're starting back from your half, 15 feet more back, you know, from your, your front wall. Now, the existing house is a little bit different than the proposed in relationship to the depths. I think the depths of the existing house, I would say, maybe 30 feet, maybe 28 feet. That's the depths of the existing house. The new house, the new design is 39, four and a half. That's the depths of the house. But again, we're starting from 50 feet, okay?
So if I do my math right, 50 minus 35 plus nine. So we are talking about 20, 22 feet, 24 feet? To my backyard, like it will go.
The house that we're proposing is 20 feet further back than your, than the currently, the current house.
So if the two houses are like this, the new house would come like this.
Right. And the reason that, and the reason that that's done is we try to design a house that's fully compliant with the regulations. The town's regulations look for the law, deeper, deeper house. So we're 20 feet further in than the current house.
15 total, or 15 total.
Okay. That, while it's my question, I'll express content slightly.
Okay, thank you. Three for three or?
I'm counting.
Okay. We'll hold off on you then. Okay, I think we're good for this witness?
Yes, then I ask Nick to be sworn in.
Please. Do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Graviano has already been qualified in the area of planning, so, Chair.
Yes. Yes, you can be accepted as an expert in planning.
Thank you, Board. The applicant's here tonight for block 3001, Lot 4, 20 Hampton Terrace. This is a lot that encompasses a little bit less than 13,000 square feet, whereas 15,000 is required in the zone. As you heard previously, the applicant is requesting for a variance for the habitable floor area ratio. 21% is required, 26.99% is proposed. The applicant is 25 square feet under the maximum habitable floor area square footage. 3520 is permitted, 3495 is proposed with this application. I would like to meet that, I would like to note that the applicant meets all of the required setbacks, including the front yard setback. The applicant is a little bit less than three feet over what is required for the minimum side yard setback combination. The rear yard is 38 feet in excess of what's required by ordinance. I would also like to note that the existing house and pool and pool patio have, have a total lot coverage of 39.5%. The applicant is removing the pool and the pool patio. So the applicant with the new dwelling, which is larger, and the exterior patio that's proposed in the rear of the dwelling is actually seven and a half percent less coverage than what exists today. Looking at the habitable floor area ratio request, the applicant is meeting or exceeding all of the required setback requirements, is providing adequate off-street parking, certainly could advance purposes of zoning A, G and I, the municipal land use law. The habitable floor area ratio could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
So we're only talking about the one variance and everything? And what basically we're talking about is we're, in, in reference to the one issue about the privacy or even the amount of impervious surface, we're reducing it by quite a bit. And that's at seven, what, 7.5%?
Yes. This proposal has a 7.5% reduction in lot coverage than what exists today.
So even though we're rehabbing, we're complete, putting a completely new building, which is bigger, it ends up being a less effect on the property?
Correct.
With that testimony, Mr. Chairman, I submit Nick to any questions that the board or any applicant, any member of the public may have.
Does anybody have any, on the board, have any questions for this witness?
Quick question. Are you not proposing a shed, a detached shed or any sort of shed on that property?
Not the builder, no.
No, the, the, there is a garage that can accommodate storage as well as vehicles.
But nothing for the garden storage, garden, like patio furniture or anything like that?
No.
Does anybody else?
We have no idea what somebody who buys it may do, but if they do, they have to come to you for permits.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And this isn't really the purview of the zoning board, but I just would like to make a comment that while it really is a maintenance issue, I would like to stress the importance of keeping the construction site clean with a silt fence and being aware of the neighbors and making sure that the trash is contained and just an overall, like, good housekeeping of the construction site.
When I send that email about the, talking to the neighbor, I'll, I'll put that in the email.
I would really appreciate it, thank you. We would really appreciate it, thank you. I'm going to say it again with the next application, too, so I'm.
I'll tell them it was a ditto. Not an issue. I'll call them, too.
I wanted to add, agree with Ms. Khan because I can see this house from my backyard and I, I appreciate that you stay within all the bulk requirements. And I think the house fits the characteristics of the, of that whole block. A lot of houses have been developed like that. But I agree with Mrs. Khan. For construction, please be aware of the neighbors. We got internet disconnected for the half of the block for three days because of the house across from the street.
I will remind them that there's a maintenance issue.
I was not within the 200 feet, yeah.
Not a problem. I talk to them often.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
Another follow-up question. I'm assuming the current property has a fence because they have a pool. Are you proposing to remove the fence, amend the fence or keeping the fence?
I don't know what the, what the applicant will be doing, but when you're doing the demolition, they usually clean all the entire property. So I would, I, I can't, I can find out, but that, generally, what happens on any of these types of things, when you're removing a pool, you remove all of the aspects of the pool, which means the coping, the patio and the fencing, because you then have to make a clean site to start the construction. So based on my 45 years of experience, I would say everything's going, but I, I don't, I haven't asked that question. It wasn't a question I had asked the applicant, so I don't know.
Fair. Thank you.
I just tell you what practice is.
Sure. Thank you.
This email's getting longer.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Would anybody in the public like to make a statement? Ah, gotcha.
Come on up to the mic, please, and let my attorney swear you in. Do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Stuart Ilkowitz, S-T-U-A-R-T, last name I-L-K-O-W-I-T-Z.
And your address?
25 Hampton Terrace, so diagonally across.
Okay. So, sir, you have a comment you'd like to make?
A few comments.
Of course.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. First thing I noticed is that on the plans, it's indicating the setback from the street to the front will be 50 feet, which apparently is compliant with town regulations, but totally out of compliance with the rest of the street. Every other house on the street is about 35 to 37 feet. And going back 50 would totally change the balance of the look of the street. If you're not familiar with Hampton Terrace, I don't know if you could look at drawings. I have a video on my phone that can show you just a little drive down the street. You can see how every house looks like the front is even. So to have something setback 15 more feet would just seem to be very much out of place in my opinion. I've been living in my house for about 33 years. This is the very first time I've attended one of these meetings. I just want to let you know there is very little traffic and the street is very, very quiet. It's been a great street for kids to grow up on and play on, for adults to walk in the neighborhood. Other streets nearby have had newer, larger houses built with multi-car garages, and they now have a lot more traffic, and they just don't feel as safe as our street does. I understand and fully respect that the builder builds houses as their business and it's clear what benefits they get from a project like this. But what's not clear to me, not just on this particular house, but just generally around town, as I see more and more of these large houses going up, what's the benefit to the town and what's the benefit to our neighborhood? The beauty of our street is that it's not like every other street in town. It's quiet and serene. Continuing to build and add larger houses with more people and more cars will diminish the character of the street. Another concern of mine goes beyond just this one house because there are probably five to seven other houses that are of the original size as the one that is going to be demolished than, that are likely to be sold in the coming years. So I'm concerned about what's going to happen to my street in the next five, seven years as those houses get sold, as other builders and developers come along. All of a sudden, more cars, more traffic and more noise does not create a more enjoyable living environment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I would only say that, you know, the town needs to grow and to provide the necessary housing. Livingston has the benefit of being in an extremely important location and you're going to, and this town is ripe for redevelopment. We propose, when we make applications, I try to propose a fully compliant site, and that's what we have given you, other than the floor area ratio. I would ask the boards for their consideration for approval, and I thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay, Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia? Yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing to this, to what you just said? I, we all live in Hampton, what?
Your, your mic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion passed.
Okay, I know, but I just want to say one thing because I want to address what you said as a board member. I hear what you're saying and we all live in Livingston and we all sort of feel the same way, but we can't control what builders build and we can't tell them how to do it and where to do it. And it's just, that's just in our, in, in the law. So we can only do so much, but we really enjoy hearing from the community and we thank you so much for coming out and telling us, you know, how you feel and how much you enjoy living in the community and how much you enjoy living in Livingston, because we all do and that's why we're here doing what we do. So thank you. And you'll let us know if the property's not clean and we're going to take care of it for you, but we're going to make sure that they do take care of it and, you know, keep it neat and clean and try to have. and try to have as little distraction to the neighborhood. So thank you. You're not smiling, so I don't know. No, but I just want you to know that we do hear what you're saying.
Okay, block 4303, lot 36, 5 Hill Street. Application number 2025-57-V, Rodak Homes Incorporated. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section, 17087 CC4. Habitable floor area ratio 30% allowed, 36% proposed, 6% variance requested.
Again, John Barbara Rula appearing on behalf of Rodak Homes. And at this time, we can re-swear and re-qualify Amon for testimony.
Uh, do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight? All right, and Mr. Cedra remains qualified to provide testimony as an architect.
Can you please, you're fully familiar with the site. You developed the plans that are before the board. Can you please give the board the benefit of your design and the requirements that the zone and how we are seeking a variance and for what reasons, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So this is a design for a single fam, new single-family house. The first floor consists of our living spaces and also we have a guest room with its own bathroom and closet. The first floor livable area is 1,481 and the garage area is 431. The next drawing on the left shows the basement, the basement for recreation. And we also have a bedroom with its own egress access. And also we have a playroom. The second floor, we have four bedrooms, including the master. The master being, uh, has its own walking closet and the master bathroom as well. Two rooms are sharing a bathroom and one room has its own bathroom and closet. And also we have a laundry room. The access to the attic is through pull-down stairs. The attic is not livable area, it's just for storage, accessible only through the pull-down stairs from the hallway. The design of the house, it's a colonial-style home with the gable roofs at the front. We have a board and batten at the second floor up, from the second floor up all the way to the big gable end. And also we have horizontal lap siding at the bottom level. We have some stone at the base of the building. It's, you know, the normal colonial designs that we see around with dark windows, you know, dark roofs, white facades. So this is the front, this is the back. We have only a single-story family room at the back. We have balcony. And we have two rear porches to access the backyard, one from the guest room and one from the family room. The area for the second floor is 1,601. The floor area ratio is 3,082 with 36%. We are not exceeding the habitable floor area. We are actually 138 square feet below, below the 3220 mark that's allowed by the code. Also, we have a small open area that's counted twice, but only counted, counted twice but only used one, counted twice but only used once. And this is the open area. It's not big, it's 38 square feet. And the attic height, we have nine feet from the attic floor to the ridge beam with the collar tie being at, thanks, five feet. Hold on, I got distracted. This is the wrong part. The collar tie being at six feet. That's it.
What is the, is there any areas where there are double heights, vaulted ceilings that are counted?
The double height area is only by the foyer and it's not a big area, it's 38 square feet.
So we only have 38 square feet that's counted twice?
That's counted twice, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I submit Amon for questioning.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I'll ask the question. So access to the attic is pulled downstairs?
Correct.
Okay, and it's not fit for habitable, it's not habitable space, correct?
Yeah, the collar tie is at six feet.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? I'll assume no one in the public has any questions for this witness.
Seeing none, you might be right.
Yeah. A leap of faith.
So at this time, I'd like to swear in Nick and re-qualify?
Do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Graviano's been previously qualified in the field of planning and remains so. Chair? Yep, we can accept him as an expert in planning.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief. The applicant is only requesting the 6% habitable floor area ratio variance. This is an application for block 4303, lot 36, with a street address of 5 Hill. The applicant is proposing a 3,082 square foot dwelling. I would like to note that's 140 square feet less than the maximal, maximum habitable floor area. So the applicant's certainly taking into consideration this lot and the surrounding environments and the design of the house. The applicant is meeting all the required setback requirements, all of the off-street parking requirements. So when looking at this habitable floor area variance, certainly advances purpose of zoning A, G, and I by replacing the existing dwelling with a modern dwelling built to current building codes. Certainly advances purpose G to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And then lastly, it promotes a desirable visual environment. The FAR variance, it could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I submit Nick for any questions of the board or the public.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? I'm gonna go with the same assumption on the public.
My estimation very simple. We have, we try to comply completely with the ordinance. Do we have one variance? Believe that the statutory requirements have been met or make sure that we don't have access from people living in attics because that's not so good. And I would ask that the board grant the approval of this application.
Does anybody on the board want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, again.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw? Mr. Kenia, yes. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Oh, she never gave it to you?
No, she never gave it to me. Just so that you're aware, when I say I'm gonna do something, I do it. But I already, I already text the applicant to let him know to book the maintenance. Oh, is she there? Okay. No, 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 she lives next door. Yeah, I told them that it was, yeah. So I do appreciate, I do want to say, I went through a very difficult time physically and I really do appreciate the board having given me consideration because of the visit. It would barely have been a physical burden to have waited to the end of last meeting. And it was, since, you know, I really do appreciate, I think that this board shows a great deal of compassion and my wife thanks you because she didn't have to come again. So have a great time. I'll see, hopefully see you in August. And in September, we're gonna have a use variance, so we'll do something different.
Excellent. Well, we're glad you're feeling better and we wish you, we're glad you're feeling better and we wish you good luck and good health. Everyone have a good night. Take care. Yeah, motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.